Let's listen to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation and the God in the vehicle.
Can please remain standing for just a second. I'd like to take a few moments just to honor Troy Morgan and bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, please be with Troy's whole family, especially Lisa during this time. If the, uh, his daughters and brother, family and friends. He'll be missed, but we hope to honor him by continuing the great work that he has started. God's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
And with that, before we start into the regular meeting. I would like to make a recommendation to the commissioners that this building be named the Troy Morgan Memorial. EMA Building. And I would hope that other council members would join me in that recommendation.
I was thinking the same thing.
So I would take a motion to make that recommendation to the commissioners.
I will make that motion.
Would that like to have a second?
I'll second that.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no one. So I will make that recommendation to our commissioner. And hopefully they'll follow that recommendation. Well, we'll start the meeting now. If, uh, I hope everyone's had a chance to read over the minutes from May ninth. And also the May eighteenth joint session we have with the commissioners. Can I do that as one? Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to accept both of those minutes. So who would like to make that motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from both of these?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, and I'll take a second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Well, by hook and crook, we have Mr. Mark Wynn here. He's going to make a presentation and. The, uh, look for the, Ms.
Thank you, Ray. I'm here on behalf, I'm the Chief Deputy Prosecutor in Jefferson County. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Sutter, who's out of town. Uh, would have been with us last week, but understandably it was rescheduled tonight and he is out of town. So kind of summarize where we are and where we find ourselves today. Our office, January one, had six attorneys. Uh, one of the attorneys left to go to Lawrence County for a chief deputy position, a position I have in Jefferson County, to go to Lawrence County. We advertised that position and after several weeks of it being advertised all over the state. We had no interest and we are finding ourselves in a position which is very difficult to be competitive. Uh, salary wise for prosecutor positions. David and I discussed it and we believe that with the attorneys we have in the office. And we've been operating that way since, uh, since mid February, that we can achieve what we want to achieve. And continue to do the work we're doing with five attorneys, but what we would are asking to do is to take that salary. And create a staff position with part of that attorney's salary. And with the balance of that, give a raise to our legal assistants on the criminal side. I will also tell you that, um, I, I can only tell you this anecdotally, but I had a conversation with. The investigator in Ripley County last week. An investigator called me with the express question, what does your staff make? And I shared with him where we were, what they were making currently and what we were bringing before you all tonight. And he's, I said, you know, it's odd that you asked me this right now. Why are you inquiring? He said, well, I'm calling all our surrounding counties. He was calling Decatur, Switz. Uh, she was calling several counties because they're finding themselves in the same spot. I will tell you anecdotally and I could. He has not sent it to me. I asked him to send it to me after he's done. Where we currently are before, uh, if you grant this request. We are, uh, at the bottom of the region for staff people at that salary. So what this does is allows us to do more with staff. It does not change our bottom line. So it's simply. We are not asking for money. We're asking to change the salary ordinance pursuant to Indiana Code to allow us to have another staff position. Increase our legal assistance pay to make us competitive. And it kind of recognizes the reality we're in Southern Indiana in hiring prosecutors, in hiring attorneys and where we are as an office. So I'm happy to, to take questions on that or, or discuss it further if anyone has them.
Mark, I would assume that, uh. It would be more, uh, with the people that work in your office that have previously been described as clerks. They would have to have more training and maybe education than just somebody coming in off the street.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, um, and we are not competitive for people. Who have extensive legal background. We're not competitive for paralegals. It's, it's just that simple. And so now if this is granted, we're going to be far more competitive. Uh, in that market for people with legal experience and like any, like at all your places where you work or have worked. If you have a lower learning curve, it's better for everybody, right? But we recognize sometimes that's not the case. But, um, we, uh, we have been through this a couple of times this year because of turnover. And I can, um, we simply do not give people who have law office experience. At the rate we're at now. We have people who do not have that kind of legal experience, but absolutely. With that, right, comes the responsibility and the training and those things as well. Absolutely. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I, I can just tell you, I would not even, uh, be here, would not have started the conversation. If we were here asking for more money. That's just not, that's not our goal. It's not what we're going to do. We don't, we're not going to come back here next year and say, we need that attorney position. I've been there. I know we can do it with who we have. I feel confident in that.
So Mark, do you think even with, with one less prosecutor than what would be ideal, considering another staff member and some more training, that you'll be able to function?
We do, okay. Yeah, we've been doing it since February. I feel comfortable. We've had multiple trials during that time. Um, there are busier days than others, but it's not, um, it's certainly manageable and it's certainly, um. I, I, we can do it. Absolutely. It's not a strength. Yeah.
If I understand correct, Mark, there, uh, there will be the, the March to June funds still available in your budget because the. The, the funds will basically be the latter six months of the year.
Right. Yes. Yeah, we've gotten those months without paying that position.
I have no problem with it. If you, you think you can get the job done efficiently and you're not touching the bottom line, it's.
It'll just get our staff up to a better paid position. So we retain on the track.
No, I, I think it's imperative that we stress that, uh, the people that they need require more training, especially with legal training. And that changes from being a clerk to a different title. So legal assistant or whatever is appropriate.
Ripley County Prosecutor does indeed share that, um, information from that uncle that, um, he's making the, obtain. Summer County size and neighboring county data. Obviously, I'm sure that with, with your office and that may help us. That's something you have to. And attach budget proposals when we take a look at salaries. For counties across the board for next year in regards to a percent increase, but just then we can take a look, um, to see if our current positions, how. How far behind they may be from neighboring counties even with this increase that.
Absolutely, absolutely. He'll, he'll provide it and we will forward it to you all.
Heather, do we need this form of a motion? Yeah, I entertain a motion to, uh, change the title to Free Legal Assistance. Is that satisfactory to you?
Uh, we have, it, it, that's not the right number, but we have, yeah, we, we.
To change the title to Legal Assistant.
Yeah.
Okay.
All the changes will be in the salary ordinance if you approve it later as well. So that would take care of the. Appropriate on that.
You know, the wording made me nervous too, particularly, um, dropping one attorney. Would it be better to make that, um. Propose, um.
Maybe the elimination of one lawyer position and the addition of one legal assistant.
I would just make the motion to accept the prosecutor's proposal staffing.
As reflected in the current, uh, in the newly proposed, um, salary ordinance. I would second raise the motion.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Here's, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Devin.
I don't have much to say. Um, I'm the chief public defender. I think I've known most, not all of you. Um, the only reason why I'm here is the state of Indiana, um, that we get our reimbursement for for the county. Um, sent us a letter and I think it was attached to your notes. Uh, notified us that we were one of three counties that had our setup the way we were as far as contract pay and they have. They were no longer going to find that to be pay parity inappropriate. So, um, in order to meet the guidelines as presented. Um, we had to make the change that we're doing and. Like what Mark said, it doesn't change where the county would sit. Um, the medical expenses and insurance are covered a hundred percent by the state up to a certain amount. Uh, which based on our plan, it should cover all of it. And then the pay is still sixty, forty reimbursed. So. It's, um, just adding basically instead of it just being a claim on the, the claim that I submitted, staying in the salary ordinance. We didn't want to change. Any questions?
There was something that I read in there that mentioned maybe getting another, another public defender. And the, uh, I might have read that wrong. And there was, there was a statistic about. Inmate population goes down if you have the, the public defender, another one.
Did I read that wrong? I read something?
No, that's, there's some data going around right now. Two years ago, our county was reviewed for pay parity and that exact question. I think since we've added, our, our judges have changed and our prosecutor's offices have some changes. Um, the caseloads have gone down drastically and I think, um, adding an attorney to this, that would not be appropriate for our county.
Efficiency in those cases because we now have Devon's chief public defender position where we did not have that before.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I assume that in itself will support this statistic that was shared. That was at the bottom of that letter. That noted counties that have the chief public defender typically have a lower decline in inmate population. There's always high.
I think, and it's down right now, um, from what it was in the last six months. So hopefully, um. You know, with some continued, you know, efforts, we can continue to keep the numbers down. I can tell you that we're, we're also finding out that we can do. The work with less people slowly, but we're starting to get there. So. Cause the way we, because of the way the county does it or the way their state does it, you're assigned a percentage for each person. And we are actually, I'm slowly trying to work my way down on the number of attorneys and their percentage. And hoping we can still do the same quality work and get the outcomes. And I support Mark's request. Their office has been, has been, um, but the number of attorneys right now has been, has been great actually. Um, I think it's almost better, um, make the communications better. It's interesting. I think when you have too many people, I think you get some inefficiency, which is odd, but, um. They're, the group that's in there now is fantastic to work with from our perspective. So.
Thank you. Any other question? Do we need to make a motion to follow the state guidelines on this?
Um, you can if you would like. It's also in the updated salary ordinance when you accept it. We'll make that change.
I think we didn't want, really wanted the honor just in case you guys had any questions.
So we don't need to, okay.
Appreciate you all. You need anything, just come in. Thanks, Heather.
Hey, do we have representative from Peter, Peters Franklin?
Hello, all.
Hello.
Appreciate the opportunity to come down and share a little bit about who we are and what we do. I'm Jeff Peters with, uh, Peters Franklin. Um, we're financial advisors, municipal advisors, consultant. And, um. Personally, I've been doing this for about twenty-eight years. I came out of the PLGF predecessor organization, which was the State Board of Tax Commissioners. Got such a bad reputation, had to change the name, but, um, you know, they serve an important function. For the last twenty-eight years or so, what I've done is. Provided financial information to different units of government throughout Indiana, cities, towns, counties, special taxing district. Um, specific to townships or to, um, counties, we provide financial planning services. To La Grange, Noble, DeKalb, Steuben, Montgomery. And then we do bond work for those as well. Some of those we do redevelopment commission work as well. We do the bond work in Johnson County. Somebody else does the fiscal planning. I've provided you an example of fiscal plan, this one's Steuben County, just for you to kind of look through and give you an idea. Of what information gets produced in there. And then we've got, uh, a little flyer of the services that we provide. What I try and tell fiscal bodies in general is. These fiscal plans are the best thing that you will ever invest in and utilize as a fiscal body, as a fiscal officer. Because it allows you to look at all the funds that the DLGF looks at, but also any other significant funds that you make decisions on throughout the year. It has about three years of history in it, current budget year, project out typically three years into the future. We can go further if you want. If you do that, it gets less reliable, but three years is normally a good projection period. But it allows you as a fiscal body to make decisions with some forethought and. Um, something that you can rely on and feel good about that we're going to be able to achieve this as we go forward. The vast majority of my clients maintain these from year to year. And it also works as a great tool to give to or to share information with taxpayers. It's got a little bit of a, a tax impact in there. It allows us too to model things as you make changes. You know, if you have, you know, hey, we're not going to be able to, to afford these salary increases. Maybe we need to look at increasing our public safety lit or another lit tax, or maybe we're eligible for an excess levy appeal and property taxes. We can model that pretty quickly in here and see what is the impact to the taxpayer, the typical taxpayer. Um, how much money does that spin off? Is it going to be something that's sustainable? So that we can give raises that we know as we go down the road, we're not going to run that money. So whether you, uh, go with us or somebody else, highly recommend that you look at a fiscal plan. Like I say, it's a great tool. It's a fiscal policy document to get all of you on the same page as to where you're going. And helps you to make a better decisions. Individually for us, we are a small shop. I've got myself. My partner Nikki Franklin's been with me seventeen or eighteen years. We've got one other staff person, then, um, an admin person. The thing I always tell people that when you call us, you're probably going to talk to either Nikki or I. Um, we don't send underlings. We don't, uh, have underlings do work that's vital to what it is that you're going to utilize. So you get a senior level person. Yet, um. I think it works out better that way. Could be that I'm just poor at delegating work to other people, but, uh, this is my last work. I love what we do. And, um, you know, would love to help you guys with any of your endeavors that you'd like to pursue. Pretty easy to work with. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What's a realistic timeline for you to put something together like this for Jefferson County?
A couple of months as we're going into budgets. Cause there'll be, uh, several other distractions as we go, but size of your county, within a couple of months, would you produce something real similar to that?
Want to ask what other counties or government entities that you may associate with already?
Um, we have thirty-five to forty clients throughout the state. County wise, we maintain one of these every year for. Steuben County, DeKalb County, Noble County, La Grange County, Montgomery County. And then we also do the bond work and the, um, TIF redevelopment commission work for Johnson County. But they have one of these plans as well, but somebody else actually prepared that. Closest thing geographically, you, we've been a financial advisor in the city of Rising Sun.
Ohio County.
You know, not Ohio County, but yeah, Rising Sun in Ohio County, city. We've been there financial advisor for. Twenty-six or seven years probably. Um, Benson's, we've got a couple of fire districts down around Benson's.
So if we wanted to contact the city of Rising Sun, personal information, would we be allowed to do that?
Sure. Yeah, they'd be happy to talk to you. Um, the mayor there is part-time, so the clerk treasurer would probably be the one you'd speak to most level. And, uh, she's been the clerk treasurer the whole time I've been there. They actually brought us in, uh, right before they got the boat. Uh, get things set up and she's still there. I think she's close to being done, but yeah.
I think one question I have, I guess you did make reference. I was curious in regards to, um, utilizing your services and paying for the services to come up with. This plan as a working document. I wondered how many government entities were retaining your services and.
We're between, probably between thirty-five and forty. And I would say most all of those maintain fiscal plans.
So they're coming back the following year?
They do. Cause what, what you'll find out, um, you know, we estimate the cost to produce something like that, walking through the initial cycle. Probably about twenty-four thousand dollars. Renewal to update that year to year. I always tell people, plan on half. If you're going to be, you know, doing some strategic things. Um, a lot of times it's cheaper than that. You know, if we're all on course, we all know what it is that we've decided on. We've made some changes. It might go multiple years where it's a lot less than that. Just update it to make sure that we're pretty much on track in that three-year projection. And then there will be years that, uh, you know, people will make significant changes. They might, um. You know, last year in Montgomery County, they decided to go to countywide EMS outside the city of Crawfordsville. So we had to remodel what it is to, um, impose an EMS pack, not on the entire county, but only on a subset of the county. Then we had to model all that, send it to the state to get it approved, the DLGF to have any of the maximum levy. And then we modeled the income tax going forward as we could see. If we increased our maximum levy, how much income tax would we yield in the future so that we didn't raise the rate higher than we wanted to? Just in order to meet all the financial needs of going countywide EMS laws. That gets to be, you know, fairly expensive because it's hourly. Um, we do just work by the hour. Other than if we do, uh, bond work, things like that, sometimes we'll go with a flat fee just because of typically not bond work and stuff and stuff. But yeah, vast majority go year to year just because they, they see the value and they want to make sure that they're still on course. And. I've had clients too that sometimes will wait a year in between. Or if they have a whole lot of cash, I've had clients call me four or five years later and say, hey, if you do that one more time, I want to. You know, I know where I'm at, or I think I do.
Maya, I have a question. I was just curious if you're making a similar proposal, um. And just putting your services up there for the Madison and the town of Panever, obviously, they're two, you know, spouting soon.
I haven't, uh, I haven't been contacted by them. Um, I typically don't, you know, we go to, we're part of the City and Town Association, which is full name now. We're part of AIC, part of the Township Association. We show up, do our vending there. Um, I don't typically go out and solicit. Just, you know, we respond as. We get invitations places or introductions in places. Um, so yeah, wasn't planning on that. Even after you told me, I'm still not planning on it. Uh, yeah, if they reach you, I'm sure you'll show up and share with them again what we do.
Yeah, I think those, this type of activity, no matter who we go with, is very important to the county moving forward. Um, our longer term projections and understanding for our budget scale moving forward.
I guess. Chris and Ray, being the longest standing council members in this room. To your knowledge, has Jefferson County ever utilized such services?
This activity hasn't taken place in the time I've been here.
So we had something similar done for the jail project, which kind of opened the scope and he kind of looked at several. And that is when I started reaching out to different people about costs of something like this whenever it came up. Um, that is how I came in contact with them. So.
Yeah, I think it'll help eliminate some surprises down the road.
Absolutely.
Well, and I think, um, I have, I've been able, I was lucky this time with the, uh. Lit changes that we had made on the process of that, but I think if we were to ever do the process of changing, um. The lit, the COON, if we were to change any of the lit rates, I think I would want some assistance in doing that so that we, um, make sure that that's done properly.
The last thing we want is pitfalls for five, six years down the road and when we could find out about them now.
Any other questions?
I'm just reading through this exciting document right now. I really am. Oh, it may be a little near, but yeah. I guess I'll be in touch.
Hey, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I dropped off a little, I guess, but you should hear your spots. Um, so let's start with the government public health committee then. It's going to be, it's the funding is now called, um, Health First. So the commissioners opted in, which Ellen Heather sent you the resolution form. So that was last Wednesday. So I wanted to go over it with you really briefly. Um. So by opting in, we're agreeing to the core services. I've attached those to you guys for some light reading. Um, most of those are things that we achieve now. They're also listed at the bottom of this colorful little one pager. And with that grants, we are going to be getting funding. So the first year will fall in, so twenty twenty-four will fall in that range of, um, about. Three hundred and sixty thousand to four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, depending on how many other counties opt in. And then for that, we'll have to maintain a three-year average, so twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three in our tax levying, which. I mean, if we just keep it close to the same budget we have, we'll be fine. So no additional funds. And then for twenty twenty-five, we could get anywhere from seven hundred and twenty thousand to about nine hundred and sixty thousand. And that would be twenty twenty-five and beyond. The goal of this is to have funding for extended periods of time. So this is not supposed to be a two-year thing. It's supposed to be, you know, every year we're supposed to be getting this, um, large lump sum. Indiana ranked really poorly in public health and it correlated very strongly with being the forty-fifth. In the country in state funding for public health. I will say.
Eighty-seven, thirty-nine, twenty-two or.
No, no, we were like number six. Jefferson County is funded.
Yes.
Very, very well.
Sorry.
And for the state. Um, so with that, starting, yes, yes. So with that. So with that, starting in twenty-five and beyond, there will be no additional funds. From the county to meet the requirement, the required portion on behalf of the county. To receive the funding from the state. So. As long as we meet these core services, there's no additional requirements on our county. So there's, um, the overview below on the pretty little sheet that breaks up the services. And then it spells it out in depth in the other packet I've given you. It's a sixty forty split. Doesn't have to be sixty forty, it can be seventy thirty, it can be fifty nine, forty one, it can, as long as it's within that range. They're gonna be happy. So there's, there are some core services that they don't want to spend quite as much money on, but they also don't require the same funding. So it shouldn't be an issue. They do put a cap at ten percent on, um, capital spending. And on the back of the one pager, there's a, there's several more like little, um. Functional details on, on how to operate it. But if you guys have any questions at any point, you can email me, you can call me. I've sat through this for. On going on almost a year, I think. So I've been listening to the ins and outs and proposals. Since day one, so I should be able to answer any questions or I can't find you the answer. So if anybody has any questions, well, then I can answer some now or we can.
The, obviously, we're going to have our form. Notifying our opt-in by the September first deadline, I think was the deadline, if I remember right.
We, we have.
Yeah, right. But we won't know then, that obviously is a pretty broad, um, lump. We won't have our exact number until after that date when they know how many counties. Are opting in.
No, so.
You're acting out.
I would also appreciate maybe a slightly later budget deadline for that one fund, since we don't have a fund number from state quarter accounts yet. I can, I mean, I can do a slight proposal, but I'm also still talking to the community partners, seeing what we can work with together.
We can always just put something together and actually do it as an additional.
Okay.
So, um. If you, since it is a brand new fund, we can wait and then put it together and not really do it in the budget process.
Okay. I can, I can always send something or bring something closer to the actual budget meeting. Of an idea of what we're thinking, so we can talk about it. Um, if that was something that would work for you guys, it wouldn't be necessarily be a final product, but.
Right.
Because I think that that's something, I do think it's something that we should talk about before sending it. So I think maybe in our budget hearings, maybe a couple of weeks before the actual. Sit-down budget meeting, I can send the proposal. That's kind of in line.
We don't finalize the budget until October.
Right. Um, I'll have to have, and really even at the August, I don't have to have the numbers truly advertised at that point. So. We should be good.
Yeah, my brain, when you, your last statement, I, I think that would be valuable because I guess when you're already thinking. For example, this, this is pretty broad. It was the first day I saw it. And like I said, a lot of these things we're already doing, but obviously this is a. Big lump sum of money with me, we can do more. But I kind of thought, well, you already know, one big idea, um, your staff, um, your administration have. And add new program on maternal child health to lower, you know, to improve tobacco and.
Yes.
Pregnancy and low workway babies. And then obviously, I'm just thinking out loud dollars that you usually have already allocated in your normal budget for. Mosquito sprays and some other things that they say some of this money can go toward. I guess if there's a new big idea you have that potentially could impact your. Twenty of twenty-four traditional budget, it may, may less in some areas, if you know, uh, we're, we're gonna. Make a big, big push for that, but it's gonna come out of this.
Most of the miscellaneous stuff like the mosquito spray is coming out of, um. The, the one, one, six, eight, and four, nine, nine, which are going away. This is replacing that. So some of that will also roll in. So I think having, having something, at least a proposed idea to go over with you guys. To explain what has to get carried over into the new fund and switched over and how we're planning on spending it. Different ideas, I think, could be a valuable conversation to have at that time.
Could this, this could, uh, expand your workload, right?
It can and it will a little bit, yes. Uh. It shouldn't expand it past, you know, the funding. The funding shouldn't expand any. Take care of any expanded work by additional. Personnel, but it was.
If all this stuff gets implemented, it'll, it'll consume some time.
Um, yeah, we meet a lot of the needs. The goal though, isn't to meet the needs, it's to, it, it's to go beyond.
But Mr. Needy.
It's, it's to do best practice and not just skate by with saying, hey, we showed up. It's doing the best that we can. And I think this funding is gonna allow us to. To really branch out and partner with. We have a lot of really amazing agencies here that are looking out for public health. And I think being able to partner up with several of them can help all of us.
Any other questions? We don't need anything on advancing this, so whatever questions, I'm sure they're due time.
Yes. Well, if you think of anything in between now and then.
You have your transfer or your additional.
Now I have, yes, additional. So I am asking the. Grand State, the Assistant Administrator position. It is a job that was at the Health Department until two thousand and eleven. I understand that at the time it wasn't needed. Uh, the work roles and job responsibilities at the Health Department have changed. And they've grown. So while we still have the same number of people, all of their like daily job duties have increased. They've, they've done so graciously. We have a lot of long-term employees at the Health Department. Thankfully, right now, we're, you know, we don't have a lot of high turnover, which is amazing. Um, but. High turnover can be a thing, we do have a few people that are nearing retirement, so knowledge transfer is important. Um. Succession planning, just being able to job shadow each other is important. And I haven't had the luxury of being at the Health Department for a long time, so these are things that I haven't. I haven't been able to step away from my office to go do. I don't, I don't have the experience, so there aren't backups for these people. Because I'm not, I can't step in, I can't do that, because I haven't been at the Health Department long enough. To, to, to step into that role and to fill that void if we were to have it. And just like, um. Mr. Lynn was saying, you know, they've had their own turnover with competitive rates. And thankfully, you know, these employees, they want to stay, they enjoy what they're doing, they like it there. But that might not always be the case, especially with a few of them near retirement. I mean. The, the deputy registrar position, from my understanding, has paroled a few times. I want to say now, she's doing an amazing job. She really likes it. But I think. This is a role that should be at the Health Department for, I mean, just to operate it as any other business would, you, you wouldn't put. All of your knowledge into one person who might leave. So I think in terms of a good business decision for the county and what we need for the Health Department, just to kind of lighten my load. I think this position needs to come back, um, especially with this. We've had additional funding over the years anyway, and the expanding job, it's just, it's not for one person anymore. It's already a two-person job before. Before the Health First comes in. And that, that money is gonna need a lot more oversight. Then, I mean, we're talking a lot, but that's a big jump in funds. And we need to make sure it's managed properly. We need to make sure we're spending it on the appropriate things. And. I need to be able to be out in the public, meeting with people, making sure these are done and not. Hidden behind my desk. So, um, I'm asking that we. Approve the Assistant Administrator position. I think right now our fund is healthy enough to not have to. Take any additional funds out of county for the rest of the year. We should be able to just appropriate that money. Out of what we already have. And the attachment I sent you guys shows where. I think that was included, the whole payroll sheet.
I think that's.
So if you, if you look, take that salary and per full loan in the last twelve years, not having that position saved almost. Half a million dollars. So I, I feel like. It's a justified request that we've saved, we were prudent with taxpayer dollars and, and now we, we need the position back. I chose, you can see on the sheet, the breakdown sheet is color-coded. Um, it might not be color-coded on your emails, but it's color-coded in front of you, how I came up with the. The amount for the salary. Um, I did eighty percent of what the administrator's salary is. For the remainder of this year and then go up to eighty-five, because historically, all the payroll sheets show that it's about eighty-five percent.
Any questions?
I don't doubt the mission is needed. I hate when you and I went to spend a day in Indy together. For the up first, they, the, um. Following the Public Health Commission's committee proposal and trying to, the Public Health Department, Indy trying to. Encourage legislative to move through, knowing how desperate the state was with these public health dollars. I know one of the first things I suggested to you is, if this money comes in. I definitely needed an office administrator beyond what you have. I mean, when I just think about. Your overwhelming nature and obviously what a blessing Heather's, this is for you, that when. Your department's more to County Highway, just the grant funding, the separation of those funds. Um, yeah, I, I didn't want to see your position behind a desk, like you mentioned. Um. So with that said, this were to be, this was more to be brought back, um. When the funding comes in then for beginning in school year twenty twenty-four. You would not necessarily see a need for an, another. Office administrator position.
My, my goal is not, I'm. There has been talks of a grant manager, but I, I honestly think that these two, I'm not gonna say that I won't come back and say I want to use some of the, the Health First for a grant. Manager, I'm, I'm not gonna say that. But I will say that I feel really strongly. But this is manageable for two people. It's just, it's not for one. And I will say, um, that I do, I believe that this needs to come, this position itself needs to come out of. The county. This is a position that I think regardless of additional fund is needed. Um, it's. Like I said, the Health Department has just changed their roles, responsibilities, the, the new codes that come down. Just throwing out random eyelash extension rulings and, I mean, things just show up constantly. Yes. So policing those things have just, it's just become a lot. And a lot of these employees are, their plates. You know, they, they're never, they're not idle. They stay busy. They find things to do. Like I said, they want to work there. Otherwise, they would, they would be gone. So their plates are already full. Because they made them full, but now they've had to drop some things that they care about. So these, these guys are already over, overworked. There's nowhere to put this load on. So I just, I think that this position needs to be something that the county has regardless of if this, and when this Health First, the goal is that this Health First fund. Will eventually, far in the future, no longer be needed to this whole extent, because we will have healthier citizens. And it just won't be a bad thing. But I would, I'd still venture that the, the position is needed and I would hate to see it leave. Whatever funding was.
Any recommendations on the sources of funding?
Um, their fund balance would be able, but that is a tax-based fund.
Balance of the remainder twenty twenty-three support.
So I've advertised it as an additional. Of course, I would have to submit it the same way that we do all other additionals. To make sure that the LGF approves the addition to that fund, but, um. That fund is typically healthy enough that it's not.
And realistically, I mean, you have this in beginning payroll thirteen. June thirtieth, which obviously.
Make sure I budgeted.
Sure, I'm just, I'm just saying, obviously, this would be the ask, but really, um. Those dollars would not be needed to support through the end of the year. Um, yeah, chances are you're.
Which it would just roll into the fund balance if we did the full amount. But it would just need to be included in the twenty twenty-four budget.
After looking at this, I kind of feel like, yeah, we need temporarily table it. So we can have a better look at our, where we can pull that money from. If we end up creating that situation. We've got a bunch of hearings that we'll be looking at the budget very closely. So there's, that's where we start here pretty soon, so.
So table it till. Indecently, until we do a year or, or.
Till the, till we get a chance to look at the budget and see where we are. And see where the money could come from.
Next year.
We're paying this. Any other thoughts on that? Am I? Off base here?
Did Megan send the fund balance report? I didn't know, do you, does it say what a lot of the year ended that?
Three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, my name.
What it's about for next year?
Yeah, I guess my, my, my thought, and obviously you don't have to say this, but you know, obviously. Anytime you're creating a position, you will start turning, you know, for be an ideal person or what, of course. Type of candidate you want and from the sky to create roles. Um, and or folks wanting to, um, take the position. I guess just playing, not necessarily devil's advocate, but one other idea, um, a little different approach from what Ray mentioned would be. To, to go ahead and look to approve. To begin the process of filling that position. Obviously, you never want to fill it and say to them, we, you may not have the job for next year, because council mayor may not approve, you know. Those, these salary dollars, dollars for next year, you know, we won't know till October. That's obviously not ideal. But knowing, I know you said your plea is that this needs to be in the regular budget. That this position shouldn't long-term be supported from the Health First dollars. But yeah. True, but I guess I'm just thinking if we, the right person is hired, if. The validity of the position and potential cost savings we reimburse, you know, dollars, make sure all things grant are being done correctly. I guess I'm just thinking if the council in this fund budget may continue to, you know, go and allow us just to keep it in there for yet another year, I guess I'm just thinking is. You know, the opportunity had to then the position could potentially be supported. Um, because really, these dollars can come from some.
It follows the criteria. So it's not, it's not out of. Out of the question, but even some of your current employees could be moved to the new funding possibly.
It's allowed, yes. Yes, like grants, if you have a current employee, I cannot move a current employee to grant funding. I can supplement, I can make them full-time, I can pay their, their benefits if I make them full-time out of a grant. This particular. You can move someone over.
Obviously, the Public Health Commission, all the, I think all hours of, according to how they're spent pushing for this. Their goal is not, if this was approved, and indeed it was, it's not so that counties can say, oh, good, we'll just eliminate our. And reduce our health department dollars, because that's what these dollars are supposed to go for. Like you said, we, we don't want to be doing just what we're doing, we'll be able to do more. And move the needles. We, we don't want to be doing just what we're doing, we'll be able to do more and move the needle as far as, um, you know. Disease rates in this county and unsafe situations and you have all of the criteria. So I guess, yeah, I don't necessarily want. That's always an option, knowing. Um, you know, if we want to do something specific for, um. You know, communal diseases, maybe we can take one. Position that's not currently grant funded and, and improve, expand, grow that position and move it. To be paid for by the health first funds. I was just thinking instead of delaying. You know, if the money's there for this calendar year. So we go ahead and make it happen, knowing that if we had to, the position could continue. Utilizing these dollars.
So I got a, well, we'll see where the funding comes from. So approve it for this year, but then leave it a little open ended depending on where the funding goes for. Where the funding comes from for next year and beyond.
So, so the position would be able to be funded by the new funding in twenty-four?
Could be. Obviously, we haven't even started on budgeting yet for twenty, we're almost there.
Right, but I just want to make, I'm just trying to figure out where the liability is. So I didn't, to your point, I don't want to bring somebody in. Questionable for next year, but it sounds like it would be solid, uh. Solidly funded to, to bring them in now and support it next year.
My recommendation would be, once we get to that point, if for some reason. It's very, uh, you guys are very against putting it into the county. The tax-funded. Fund, I would probably ask for something, you know. In writing or something that would say, you know, if help first went away. But it would be funded, but I can't, I just, I think that it's in the best interest. Department, you don't. Everyone has somebody that's ready to step up and at least knows a portion of their role to replace them. And I just. That's not, that's not an apartment that you want left. With no one knowing how to operate it. There's too, there are too many things that go on there.
Yeah, and I think the sooner you get somebody in and start to get in training before you start getting the son's grant in, the better.
I would agree.
Try to learn everything.
Yeah, no, that's a really, really good point. Curious, um, obviously I wasn't on the council in twenty. Eleven. The current assisted administrative position that was eliminated at that time, the same duties and responsibilities. A lot being financial, was it set up in a similar way?
This job description is almost.
This isn't LBN, this is not a.
This is almost the exact job description that was listed.
So what happened back then was Tammy was the admin, the assistant. And she stepped into the role and I think she just kind of made the call on her own, I can handle this. Since she was very trained in what she did and she filled in often in the administrative role. So I think it was the amount of training that she had had and where that office was at that point. Why she was able to make that jump. Which it was a great savings for a long time.
I would, I would recommend. Um. You know, given, given the opportunity to go ahead and proceed to find a new candidate. Um. And funding it. This year, I'll, I'll just go and make a proposal, funding and out of the, um, tax, tax-based fund. Uh, for the balance of twenty-three. And then. If needed in twenty-four, it could be funded out of the. The new state fund, I mean, or partially, or partially. Yeah. I, I agree, there's, there's a lot to, um. You know, to the health department, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of changes, a lot of constant changes, and we want to make sure that we're on top of those as accounting.
I second that.
You have a motion and a second. Um, although some favors seem to be saying, all right. We suppose.
It's the first I've seen of this. I appreciate you sharing it and get some of these very same responsibilities for, as I mentioned, the conversation you and I chatted, I. Thank you.
Yeah, go finance, a super worker.
Well, hopefully I have some internal candidates.
Okay. Good.
Very sorry.
Yeah.
Very, next are commissioners.
Plus.
Sure. So with everything more to tourism, uh, we've gotten into a process with the board of tourism to try to. It had been come a time when everybody would come every month asking for funds. Um, we tried to turn it into a cycle, but we had a spring cycle and then we had a couple other things that we talked about as far as. Uh, funding the big three, I mean, we got a, a river fest. And Chitap. Uh, so, uh, but you know, as we, we've got a. A fall cycle that we'd like to help some folks get. We helped a lot of those, um. Madison Arts Alliance, Madison Music. The three ends, um, the. Historical Society, uh, Historic Madison. Uh, so we've provided some funds for them. We'd like to take some more of the. Dollars that are coming in. I think so far this year through the end of May, and Keeper Stack has been, uh, two hundred and twenty, almost two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and with the, what we've got budgeted for VMI, um, we've got, we've, you know. People are getting out and so we got a lot of money and we'd like to, to help these folks out right now with every, what's remaining in the budget for the year is about, um. Four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, um. I'm sorry, we've got about two hundred and ninety thousand remaining. Uh, we've got four hundred and sixty-eight thousand plus a few more because I didn't, I don't have May number in here. We, we had at that point a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. In the fund, and so we'd like to transfer some more over, uh, realizing that's only through the first five months that two hundred and twenty-five thousand will get back again, the way numbers are going. But to do a fall cycle, we need to put more funds in it. So we'd like to add, have an additional, additional. Additional hundred and fifty thousand into the community outreach fund, that's what we did a couple months ago. But just trying to be able to help folks, I mean, it is a time when tourism is on the rise and it's time to strike while the iron's hot. And, um, help organizations. Obviously, those that receive funding in the spring. There may be some things they can bring up that might get in the fumble or the, in the fumble, we're trying to look for some other groups that, uh, maybe not, don't normally receive funding for tourism.
But did, by order tourism, haven't necessarily decided, of course, how this one interview will be spat.
No, some of it, some of it will go to those three because we, by the time we were done with the spring cycle, we need a little bit more, twenty-five thousand to. Fill in, uh, one of those, the three. So the rest of it will be for the fall cycle. No, their applications would be due towards the end of July and then we'd have the cycle in August and hopefully not have to. Worry with that at our meetings. No, as everybody keeps you every meeting in line. But. Yeah. So that's the board of tourism. Most of it for the fall grant cycle a little bit, twenty-five thousand will go to the. Take the break of points that you wanted to go through because we got enough for the other two.
Well, according to your motion. Uh, do you want?
Would you do it now or we can do it at the time we do the cheat sheet before the resolution?
All right, so the other one is economic development. Uh, we, um. We'd like to do a study, a development study for campground at the Kruger Lake. Um, we have a landscape architect who's going to come in and kind of lay it out for us, hopefully in preparation for ready two point O, so we can take that. Um, and get someone to come in and build a campground and then it's also, this is my thought is someone that would run the campground. Lakeview County wants to get in the business of running a campground, but the way camping's going, they're all booked, um, and we bring, bring more people into the county. So that's one. So that's, it's, it does not exceed thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars to do that study. Um. We are part, Hanover College has gotten a grant. They got it through ready for the next level trails. Uh, anyway, they wanted to do a, a, a regional study for trails. Um, and they're, they're saying that we ought to be involved in it, which is true. I think we have some opportunities for trails. Um. And we have an old rail line down there coming from the old Marble Hill goes, going across, that would be an easy. An easy fix, but you know, the, 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 the thing with those, this trail funding is that you need to be tied into something regional. Do, to put a single trail in for you in a county. So we get a lot of them, so. Okay, so, I mean, if we get a trail, I mean, Hanover College is going to have this one that goes, at least from the Heritage Trail down, uh, they've talked to us about not abandoning, um. River Bottom Road, so that will be part of it, but we will be in the, almost in the Clark County. So I think that's one thing we need to look is down to down into Clark County and then you're. Draw us down State Park and. And you're Clarksville and you're just, New Albany and we have the Monon Trail, we go all the way to with you. So, um. That is, to be part of that study is seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars.
Colleges ask us.
Well, the, 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 the regional, the consultant that's doing this regional plan wants us, says it to, to, to make that connection because right now I know where trail stops. Does it, doesn't make it to Clark County, um, but we, we get not only included in the rest of that, but also in these other opportunities. So. And it's, uh, the five counties. I mean, it's the part of, so it's, uh, Clark, Floyd, Washington, Scott, Harrison, and us. What would be included in all those?
Really, really well publicized and heightened.
Well, that's my thought, with this, that old abandoned rail line that goes over, it's got a county, so it.
I think it, it is, it brings a lot of people.
Yeah, and then. Third thing in economic development is, um. So we, last year, we, we helped out with this placer AI data. So this is kind of geo-fencing, you can figure out who's coming from where, who, what their demographics are, you don't know their name. They figure out names individually, but we do know where they're coming from. So helping us kind of develop plans for, you know, is it housing, is it, um. If you're businesses based on these demographics, uh, some of it is kind of tourism related, but some of it is economic development related. Um, and our part would be five thousand dollars and then. Be part of that contract. Then it is used quite a bit. I think a lot of theirs has been focused, some, well, not a lot, some of it's been focused on tourism, looking at how many people are coming in for each of the events. But also looking at other opportunities that are out there. Uh, the last one, you know, um. Is, is on Springdale Cemetery, not really economic development related, but we have no fun in the, at the preservation or at least learning for that, or if you want to take from there. But they're redoing the chapel at the cemetery and have asked over twenty-five thousand dollars for most to help. Rehabilitated and back into.
You know, the total project cost, I, I heard about this and read a little bit about it, but.
I didn't get the total project cost, I just told them. He may have mentioned it at the meeting.
And this came directly from the cemetery board?
John, you're on.
Yes.
So all four of those, the total of eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Mine item in the ERP fund for animal development.
They, you, uh, I've, I've got two numbers here, seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty-three.
Sure. High, but I've been for the campground, but it was thirty-six, I was just, sorry.
So the seventeen-nine is, is, um, regional trail study, okay.
So I would have to advertise. If they wanted me to advertise this for our. For the Eton Development. For July and then I can check the balance on. The historic preservation, you can see that.
So the other, it certainly seems like a proper use of the, um, economic development, um. Portion for the ERP funding, it's a little bit of a stretch, um. If we deem that we're giving dollars for that, um, chapter restoration for Springdale. I prefer to see what the balance is from as a total, if you want five, yeah, to see the balances from the historical. Preservation funding and.
I can get that information to you guys.
Three hundred and sixty-five thousands and a half.
That's what I thought, it was. Um. The Eton Development Fund was lower, but the historic had the higher balance, so then. But I would just have to advertise that as an additional.
And a portion that's committed each year, correct? The historical budget, so I have to look at that.
Right, so I know we talked about that and, and some of the minutes there was, when we talked about the pool, it was just, it was adding twenty thousand a year or two, and I think it was twenty-three was mentioned, and I know it's not a huge amount, but it. And then giving them a little flexibility because we had said a certain amount for pace and then additional, so we let them. Which one needs more than them, if they're going to put twenty-five to the pool, then they could use forty for base program, so. I know that doesn't make a huge difference, but I felt twenty-three in the minutes, so.
You know. Definitely interested in the Kruger Lake Campground. I think that could be really. Really good role for the county because the, the Madison Scan Ground, good luck, Cliffy, good luck getting that.
And just, one, just on the other side of sixty-five, away now it's back, right, so, I mean, they're all.
That would be good, good.
If that study was on, when would that realistically, I mean, could the study begin? Quick? What's the acre? Um, with what we're looking at for her, what the ability for the campground area, how big?
Oh, I, I don't, I mean, we have.
At one time, that was the campground.
And there's no camping spots up there.
On JBG was going full bore, the officers would come from all over the country. In Canada, especially the ones from Indianapolis.
Or then. But, but the, the three hundred and.
There's two hundred and fifty-four acres.
Fifty-four acres on that over there.
So there's probably. Twenty acres here conceivably, the infrastructure was there at one time, it would have to be redone, but it's. It's, you need fifteen F service now for most of the.
Really like to pull lookups. So we have.
Those clambers.
Hey, there's nothing better. Going to see the Grand Canyon clamping, what a trip. Way to go again. And further.
So really, we would not be voting on this until July, July.
As you have to advertise.
I do have that, yes. And I am curious if you happen to see that in an email from you, so just here's on the total cost. And I don't know who else they're making an ask from, um. For the, the Springdale.
If I can look at the minutes from our meeting and see what.
Thing you want to repair that is bringing down, okay. There's a couple volunteer groups that are doing.
So it's IDOC. Cause I'm, I'm in there about three days a week and they're always there.
I did the jump.
Thank you. Um, part two, you're coming in, uh, we did, um, folks to recognize the building, the remained in honor of Troy supportive.
And that would like for the commission mayor to consider our request of committing to the Florida mortgage tomorrow. There's the bar.
I don't have anything.
Thanks for all your, um.
I bet those words anytime.
Extra work now and. Moving forward.
Yeah, you guys want to report or you want to do it or not? You want to come forward? So just follow up, um, HBC folks will put out and Jim wrote me some notes, so if you're confused here about this. Um, they're going to do that dispatch area and the certain room in the back. Uh, the, the company was, uh, was, uh, suddenly HBC kind of always been at eleven in the morning, forty nine. And so we'll schedule that. She told me they're going to start in like twenty three, they thought they might, they might be able to get a hundred a day, uh, maybe a day and a half. So shouldn't put them out too bad, so. And, uh, and get rid of the role. And if I understand that right, they can do the king courthouse thing.
Yes, those are appropriated during budget time then.
The next thing, just, just so you have the heads up is our, our period of points, um, service contract is doing. Um, that's that mobile box that we take with some of those places, so if it powers out, if the internet's out or stuff, I think, I think you probably do lots of Netflix on the menu with that box. Pretty awesome, so. But we got, we've got money to take care of that. That, that's just a. Let's see here, um, Duke Energy Grants, we talked about that a little bit today, of these guys and, and a couple of their staff members about what to do with some money. There's, there's up to twenty thousand available on that fund. That's due by the end of the month. So we gotta hit the gas up pretty hard on that. So I know that, um, we have some, some needs out and logistics building in Hanover. And, um, uh, right now, currently Troy took, um. Like a security system off of his house because he upgraded that one and took it out there. And he's been paying that twenty nine dollar a month fee to get notification to his telephone. Uh, if something happens out that way, so. I, I think it would probably be our regulation just to staffs to give her that and take a look at. We have an estimate from. We did, it's a ETC, uh, I think I talked to Guy today, I, I know that they've had some. And, um, I think that for seventeen nine maybe, but they're, um. Their network hasn't there, so they said they'll have to revisit that. So he's going to call me sometimes to try to get a date call to see what more else to him. That's one more timeline runner, so he stands still, I think I'm a hurry. I think I'd be, I believe, like, the best thing we do that, so pre-sized movie out there, it's a building, it's going to house a. A lot of dollars and a lot of things that you're going to need if something happens again, so. So important there, um. The tow motor, um, power lift project that, um. Gavin Hemmerich, Clark County, um, he's worked with the Health Coalition for a while and honestly, he's agreed to pick that one up and carry that across the finish line. So, um, it's like pretty pronounced fork truck, and fork truck driver, it looks like a nice one, whatever that looks like. Pretty cool, so, um, he's, he's. I think it goes too slow for me, man, I'm a lot faster than that, so. That's the side of the building, if you exactly. You know, that's why I don't record it driving it, but, uh, so, uh, really, uh, this, these guys have been great about stepping up and taking care of business for us, so, um. I, I think we've got some great support, um, for the overall mission and which brings me to, um. Well, let's see, the, the EMPG grant, that's the twenty, the, for twenty two has been approved. Jim sent me an email, Matt, today, so that, that's coming. So that should be here in two, so this is how we're going to pretty state for the positions here. And, um, and the last thing I just want to say is, um. You know, thanks for making this recommendation because I, I, I think that this is Troy Morgan's heart and soul. And, uh, and I remember my dad, he started on the very first nine one four that we had here in the county. And, uh, you put all phone lines and stuff, okay, and, yeah. So, um. It's pretty awesome to see that this thing kind of turned out well, and this, this is the position that he had ever since he got in the outside of the area. So, you know, bigger places we're doing it and, um, and lots of places where we're like every, and so. This building was his heart and soul and I really appreciate devotion and, and I had to consider it for that. It was a lot for the family, I know it will. And, um, the support for, for all of us. I know we're in different locations. We don't see each other all the time and, and very rarely we're on the same roof. But, um, to, to feel and see the support when we're driving the guy to the cemetery was pretty amazing. You know, the courthouse was on and, and it just really felt like we're, we're part of team. You know, and the team was, was really focused on one thing today. And, uh, and I think we can do a job, send them off and, and I think the family's really happy, so, so thank you all for the support on that and, um. And unless you have any questions from us, that would. Troy set us on a mission. We don't have a destination. But we're going to motor on through to keep on tracking like you want to take zones.
The EMA board meeting is, has anybody?
Talked about, I, I think Jim was, we talked about it over today. I checked my schedule and I'm not sure to check with those guys yet. I think we were looking at the ten, I was just going to send an email.
I was really excited about getting. Placed on that board and I was looking forward to, I was looking at some emails that Troy was sending me. Give me information. He was so good about trying to bring me up to speed, not, it was just a gut punch, you know, because I was really looking forward to working with him. And he was, he was just, uh, so serious about what he was doing and what a service what he was doing was through the county. It's just a gut punch.
Yeah, he's, he's been fantastic. I, I, I don't remember not going to him already. We, we lived you out this way from then with his, his mom went on the old top and waited there. And, uh, he's, he's really, he's been boss to me. He's been, he's been mentor, he's been a really good friend and honestly, he's been like a. Probably a big brother that I've ever had and always been a big cheerleader for me and, and he's still that role for lots of people and, or services and even outside of the business as well.
I mean, very approachable about. Emergency, anything like that, anything like that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, he sets on a mission and that's going to continue. And I think we got a good team and we'll all come together and make sure things are getting done and. And, uh, I, I know he, he wants the exact same thing. It's starting to sound a little work, so I'll go work it. If I can catch you something other day, and I will, and I'll, and carry on. So thanks for the support. It means the world and, um. You know, we can see each other day, every, either every day. It's nice to know that we got a good team together. Great foundation, so thank you all. Thank you.
Signage for the building that could change sort of like the building name. Responsibility with Bowland there. Trying to step outside the building in my mind thinking, oh yeah, signage. I mean, obviously we have love, digital sign out here, but I was trying to pitch to. Building signage and didn't know it, um.
Troy will recommend big neon.
Put it out like the Hollywood sign and.
Yes. Have the drones fly over.
I, I think Troy Morgan, but I say he sent it would be, yeah, I think it's. Rolls off the time pretty easy, not too much, and, and I think pays off because I'm just, this, this was this guy's mission before we even knew that central dispatch was even a thing. And now it's all here and I won't share what, what he said to me last time we sat down together, but, but, uh, I remember he was excited about it, yeah. Still excited about it. He's just, he's just like getting used to it or whatever, and so it's, it's wow. So what, what, what a thing, what a legacy for him to leave. After all these years, you know.
And six twenty.
You want to go ahead with the transfer?
Yes.
Read through those.
So, um, you already made a motion for the health department, so I'm going to skip over that one. Um, and then convention and tourism, which is seven, three, zero, four, zero, zero, one, zero, three, zero, two, dot, zero, zero. Community outreach for one hundred and fifty thousand.
All right. Second.
Okay, and then, um, we did have additional, uh, turned in for the sheriff's department for their reported collections. And this is just moving the money that they received it in on a monthly basis to their expense lines. Um. For. Extra spending. So the first one is one, one, zero, one, zero, zero, one, zero, one, zero, one, zero, zero. Accident reports for four hundred nineteen dollars. Zero, zero, or one, zero, 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 one, nine, zero, two, 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 zero, zero. Medical and hospital for one thousand two hundred eighty five dollars and ten cents. Four, one, zero, two, zero, zero, one, zero, one, zero, one, zero, zero, sheriff donation in the amount of three hundred dollars. And then one, one, nine, two, zero, zero, one, zero, one, zero, one, zero, zero, sex and violent offender, one hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion that all of those items distributed by, um. Reported collections is how that's.
So, um. We previously would do this every month. And I don't know why, but we got away from doing that and it really should be done every month, especially the ones that are in, um. County general, like the medical and hospital. So that is amounts that they've actually recouped for, uh, medical expenses coming back in the county. Okay, and then since everything was approved, that was advertised, um. I have a resolution in the amount of one hundred and eighty three thousand. Seven hundred twenty one dollars and ten cents and it is resolution twenty twenty three dash oh nine.
I'm going to take a motion to. Make a motion to approve resolution two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, nine. For one hundred eighty three thousand, seven hundred twenty one dollars and ten cents. Motion second. So move all those affairs, say aye.
Okay, and then the very last thing, um, we are in the middle of being audited by state border accounts and. Previously, we had only when we make amendments to the salary ordinance, we were not passing around a copy and actually having that signed. We were just using the minutes from that point forward. Um, I do have a copy of the salary ordinance for the changes that we've discussed over the last two meetings. And that being adding the public defender. Um, the chief public defender, the changes to the, um. Prosecutor's office and the highway department changes. And then next meeting, I will bring it back with changes for the health department. Um, but if you guys could make a motion and pass that, then we could go ahead and get those pay items go. That we had already heard.
I'll return that motion. I make that motion. All those affairs, say aye.
We would just re-approve the salary limits with the changes.
So every time we amended, we should actually have a copy of the sign and. In our ordinance book, so I'm doing that from now on.
Speaking of signing, I don't believe the minutes. They were per, I don't know, those maybe were right.
Yeah, I think.
I don't, I'm not going to sign. Right, there.
There's one little.
We move in here.
Yeah.
Second copy. That's. Do you want to go sign?
No. You can stop that one.
Okay, no, I'm shredded.
Signs like.
I forget, that's getting a. But I, I'm not, I don't want to send this. That was not a joint meeting, so I just.
Do you have everything signed?
Everything's on.
Okay. Any other comments? Are there any motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Okay.